Hafade, thank you everybody for being here this evening. This town hall is held by the Committee on Education, Libraries and Public Broadcasting, and it's officially called to order at the home of the Titans, Tizen High School. Today's date is Tuesday, October 28, 2025, and the time is now 5:20 PM. My name is Senator Vince Borha. I'm the Chairperson of the Committee on Education, Libraries and Public Broadcasting. Joining me today from our committee are my colleagues, Vice Chair of the Committee, Tina Rose Munia Barnes. We also have joining me, joining us today as well from the 38 Guam Legislature is Senator Chris Barnett. Before we begin, I'd like to express my gratitude to the Tizen High School community. You guys really showed up. So again, a big round of applause for you, the amount of students. This is probably the largest town hall or showing for the town hall that we've had this school year. So thank you for coming. Definitely want to recognize the faculty administration, Principal Sophia, Ms. Duñez, who made this event possible and for hosting us this evening. Also can't, you know, can't miss thanking my hardworking staff from my committee, the Legislature's A B team and our central staff for streaming this important discussion live for the people of Guam. Please give them a round of applause. We also want to thank the Board, the GDOE Board Chairman Sablon, the Deputy, I mean, the Superintendent of GDOE, Superintendent Swanson and all the Board members, Mr. Peter Alexis Ada, who's joining us here tonight, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Adamus, Deputy Superintendent Joe Sanchez. We also have with us tonight former Senator Roy Canata, who's here on behalf of the Governor's Office. And then we have Deputy Paul Finance, Mr. Paul Wade. Tonight, we did have some key topics that we're going to discuss, but we're going to cut that a little short because you guys really showed up and I feel like we need to spend more time listening and talking. So with that being said, we'll go ahead and have the Superintendent give an opening and then we'll, we'll go to public comment so that we can get everybody to start providing their testimony. Thank you. And now Dr. Swanson.
Thank you, Senator. I'm really pleased to be here. The initial presentation we're going to do was an update on our facilities plan, but I'll just invite folks to tune in on Thursday for the State of Education Address that I'm going to do on at 6 o'clock on Thursday afternoon to get that detailed information. If there are questions tonight about the progress that we're either making with facilities and renovations and plans for the coming year or our budget planning process that's underway right now, we have the folks here who are able to answer questions along that line. Other than that, I will talk less and listen more.
Thank you, Dr. Swanson. And if my staff could bring me the list of, and we'll start with the community input or stakeholder input. And so we'll start with Kayla Santos. I don't know if I said that correct.
Hello, I'm not Kayla. But I'm here to introduce first before we do our testimonies and ask our questions. We are going to be showing a quick six-minute video just to preface the situation. I'm pretty sure everybody here is aware of Tizen's unique hardship that a lot of people have been like, oh, rumors and stuff like that. So we just want to start this off like by showing this video. I hope everybody bears with us. It's just a six-minute video and it's from the October Ad Hoc Committee. So thank you, Freedom of Information Act. September, I'm sorry, September. Where's Mr. Omadi? Okay, you ready? I'm going to turn off the lights.
Mr. Andres, we will end double session. That means even if they build those temporary classroom, it's still double session for Sanchez. We don't want that. I don't want that. We will find a facility, whether they're going to be happy or not, we will, we will redistrict. Because remember that Tizen was not at least to be a permanent high school. It was not, I was on that board. It is for backup for any schools that needed to get out of their facility to be repaired. So we will find a school, whether the stakeholders of that school likes it or not, but we, we, you know, we don't want to continue double session for Simon Sanchez period. That's why the board is taking over now. I understand because I signed that contract before. I understand the rights of teachers, but what about those that are not teachers? If these kids go and register at other district because they're tired, we're going to school in the afternoon, coming home late. And if you don't stay in Jigo, you don't know how dangerous Jigo is in the evening. So we have to stop, we have to stop the double session of Simon Sanchez, regardless of the temporary classroom. Because it was still, we still will not be able to provide the GCC class. And why are we going to deny the student the GCC class? And they have how many classrooms that are of a capacity, you know? So we're going to look at that. They're going to be unhappy people, but I feel that if you have a program, then share the program with the other schools. And I think that's what happened in the past is that, you know, that was not, the board taught everything. But we will have this, stop the double session and it's unfair. It is unfair. The seniors had enjoyed the freshman year, they were in full session. Now Mr. Torres' daughter will continue and graduate at a double session. And then we will plan the next meeting and we explore the options. And the options will be redistrict. We will redistrict. And those that are supposed to go to GW, go to GW. Those that are supposed to go to JFK, go to JFK. And then if we have to put Simon Sanchez at Tizen, that's what we're going to do. Because that's what I want to see. Why you say that when Tizen is the one, Sanchez wanted to have a full day, they're not going to be afforded at Tizen High School, at Tizen building facility? We, you know, we have to take care of our kids from Jigo.
So, G, so the goal that we're moving forward to is to keep the Simon Sanchez community together and have them be at Tizen and work on the...
We will have a face, but they're not going to double session with F. William Guerrero. They are not, because it's not, not even to that. Somebody said, oh, they can double session with Okudu and F. B. goes back to their campus. It doesn't help, it's still double session. We are ending double session.
Okay, so are we also exploring then the option, Ms. G, to redistrict the Sanchez community and dissolve them and put them in other schools? Because that's also...
No, no.
Okay.
Yeah, why are we dissolving Simon Sanchez? Bad enough, they hurt for not being at the, their school's not ready, but dissolving is not going to work.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Ms. G, so we can all understand that. Thank you.
But I don't think the Mayor Lizama will agree or the Vice Mayor will agree to dissolve the Simon Sanchez. No, there's just no way. You know, Mr. Torres is a product of Simon Sanchez. It's why Mrs. Lizama is a part of Simon Sanchez. Ethan Cruz, we're going to dissolve. There's no way that I would agree for that. Because we, we need to, we need Simon Sanchez to be rebuilt and hopefully, you know, it will go through, but that's how it is.
Okay, Mrs. G, so in line with what Mr. Andres just clarified, we're looking at keeping Simon Sanchez intact, placing them at Tizen High and taking Tizen and putting them in their original attendance area prior to the opening of that school in 2014.
That's the option. That's the, that's the option. That's the option that we're going to explore is we are going to do redistricting. And from there, do we redistrict Tizen High School students that were supposed to have been their attendance area at GW? And those that are, their attendance area is JFK. Remember that, the two sides. So that's the option, but we will redo the redistricting. And Mr. Philenko, you know, is right, let's redo the redistricting. But these are the, these were an option that we lay on the table for next meeting. And how many, how many, how many, because right now, if Tizen only has like...
They're just getting farther from Jigo if you bring them here to Tizen.
It doesn't matter because they're still farmed around to JFK. And you know, this thing about their father, I don't think that the kids are going to, as long as they have a full day of instruction, that they don't mind going up to Tizen. So you know, I am not going to speak for them because for me, at the distance, it's nothing to do. Is giving the kids a full day of instruction and after half day. We'll find a way if we have to approach the Senator, the Governor, because this is for our kids. And I heard that before, even if they have to go to Tizen High School because the Barigada High students go to Tizen, right? So I don't think there is a problem. And they did that before with Mr. Binaventi when he was a planner. But we will, we explore that also, but...
Thank you for that. So before Kayla speaks, I would like to ask you a couple of questions. I'm sorry for taking some of our time. Last September or October, when we went to the meeting, we were given reassurances that there's no mention, right? There's no mention that we're closing Tizen High School. There's no mention that we're going to redistrict. There's no mention, it's not even on the table. But unfortunately, as you have witnessed from the Ad Hoc Committee of September, from the Chairwoman herself at the time, it already seemed like it was a done deal. That we are going to, this is what we want, this is what's going to happen, we took over. So my question is, when we went to the October meeting and several of the Board members were there to present in this meeting, how come none of them ever mentioned that this was discussed? I mean, none of them spoke, definitely. I mean, it was a forty-something minute-long meeting, so we just kind of condensed it, you know, to the parts where it was specifically mentioned that our school will be closed and our kids redistricted. But there was no mention. It made to think that we were kind of, you know, almost delusional that there were just rumors that we were going to be closed, that we were going to be redistricted. But obviously, that's not true because it was being discussed behind closed doors where our principal was not invited to that same meeting. And I guess this is the lechiflan that she was talking about. So I just wanted to ask, how then can we recover from the disingenuous... What's the best word? Intent, I guess? Lies, I guess, that were said during that meeting. And, you know, we are here now and we would like to know what is the plan moving forward? Are there more plans that are discussed that we are not privy to, that our own admin are not allowed to be in? And if so, please mention it now before we have to like keep asking like every single month, can we please have the information from the Ad Hoc Committee of that month? Thank you so much.
We're going to go in and have the Chairman from the Board just kind of respond to the teacher's comments. Mr. Chair.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. I was not there at that Ad Hoc Committee. For your information, Ms. Gutierrez, who was then the Chairperson of the Ad Hoc Committee, I guess felt all the pressure from all of you from Tizen. And at that October meeting, the very next day, she texted me that she resigns as the Chairperson of the Ad Hoc Committee. So she is no longer with the Ad Hoc Committee. The new Chairperson who took up the mantle is Dr. Judy Guthertz. And if you heard Dr. Judy Guthertz, if you heard Dr. Judy Guthertz at that meeting in October, Tizen is safe. As you heard Dr. Ron Meninch at that October meeting, Tizen is not on the table. And as you heard from me, the Chairperson of the Guam Education Board, one of our most popular senators told me to use this phrase, "over my dead body", before Tizen is closed. You guys, let me tell you, Tizen High School has performed very, very well. Even though, even though it was never intended to have Tizen become a permanent high school, what it has turned into is a permanent high school. Because, because, because of all of you. And we can sit here and listen to all of you. I know already what's in your hearts. I wanted to know, and Mr. Pete Ada, who's also a member of the Board, I'm sure that his heart and my heart is the same. We're going to keep Tizen open. Yes, yes, there are things that we have to do, but it's not just the Board. It's all the stakeholders put together. We feel for Sanchez and we said we're not going to have double session anymore. We feel for JFK, we feel for Okudu and we feel for F. William Guerrero. But that's what we're going to do. While we told them there's no longer going to be double session in the next school year, we're going to find every option and every opportunity to do that, but Tizen is not part of that option. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kayla, you can start.
Hello, sorry. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kayla Santos and I am representing, representing the Associated Body of Students of Tizen High School. So before I begin with my speech, I'd like to clarify that it is a statement and a speech and I am, this is, I'm not open for like questions. So I was never much of a poet, no, not at all. I was never fond of the English subject and would rather study math instead. But strangely, today, I found it quite poetic how we are in the throne and the same people trying to top us off of our throne are not even here right now. Like a bunch of monarchs holding clandestine meanings with discussions and ways of displacing my people and arguing who's the rightful heir to our throne. Well, I am here to remind them all that the walls do have ears and we have little birds that sing. I would like to begin by answering a question that one of the Board members asked during a meeting. The question was, who is protecting Tizen? The answer is no one, because the very people that are supposed to safeguard and protect our future are the ones intending to end it. We are all victims on an education board that have failed us. Whenever, whenever we bring up this subject, we were always met with reassurances and vague answers about the future of Tizen. But behind closed doors and fancy meetings, we hear rumors and murmurs about school closures and are met with uncertainty. Even in your silence, your actions betray your intentions. So I am here today to break that silence and to let you all know that you can't defend your own legacy while simultaneously offering a solution that would end another's. That is shameless hypocrisy. If you're going forward with your decision, just know that you are doing it with an imperialistic mindset. Although I do feel sympathetic towards the shark that have lost their homes, losing one's home does not justify taking on others. I would like to make it clear that none of my statements are addressed towards the Simon Sanchez students or alumnis, but towards the Board's uninformed decisions. The Board's inability to address these issues that have been plaguing Simon Sanchez for the past two decades have led to the sharks losing their habitats and endangering their pride as sharks. In Tizen High School, we came up with a college career readiness proficiency skills as part of our grade system that other high schools have only just begun to implement. If you are not informed, our school implemented a grading system to include soft skills that employers consider vital in the workforce, known as LIT in Tizen, which stands for Leadership, Time Management and Problem Solving Skills. I would like to end my statement by evaluating you as much as you've evaluated our administration and our superintendents in the past. If you were to be graded according to our school's CCRPS, I would give you a one due to the fact that you all have waited for far too long to take action. You failed at doing things at a timely matter when given a generous amount of time. Did you feel as strongly about Simon's legacy then? Or do you only feel strongly now because you are facing the consequences of your own incompetence? As a solution to your inadequacy, it seems like you're using us as an easy way out as a last-ditch effort to save face. Why do us Titans have to suffer the consequences of your own inaction? If you are going to bring us down, then so be it. But we are not going down without a fight. And like Ms. Gutierrez said, that's what we're going to do because that's what I want to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla. Mr. Frank Flores.
Senators, Mr. Superintendent, members of the Board, thank you for being here today. You can see how passionate our students are about our school. That's why you see so many of them here today. And what we have done here and started at Tizen with the leadership of Ms. Duñez is not common even in this region. We're the first career academy certified school in the Western Pacific. And many people think that it's something that can be done at other schools. It is not. It's very special. We have 12 career pathways. We give students voices and choice. We allowed for a law enforcement pathway into our school and now we have students today who are becoming law enforcement officers. I'm a graduate of the U.S. Air Force Academy. I've been all over the world. I've seen educational models in Europe, all over the United States. There's nothing like this school anywhere in this region. People need to understand that. And I think from my perspective as a voter, as a member of this community, we just, we really need to see transparency. If we're going to go on this journey, we need to go on it together, understand everybody's intentions and work together for the, for the betterment of our students and our island. But please recognize the hard work that we have done. 12 career pathways. We allow our students to move between these pathways. In our ROTC program, last year, we had 33 college scholarships. And we allow those students to move between different pathways. Two of my students are becoming law enforcement officers today. And these teachers have worked so hard to build what we have here today. I invite you to come see what we're doing. Not just hear my voice, but see what these students are doing and see how special what we have here at Tizen is. I'm a 25-year veteran, retired Air Force Colonel. I've been a base commander. I've seen a lot of things in my life and my career. And what we have here is very unique. And these students that you see here today, we are reaching across educational pathways, across cultures to make these students better. Come see our successes because we will amaze you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tim M., I don't, the last name's not clear. Tim?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, members of the panel. I'd like to express to you my heartfelt concerns about the school which has adopted me ever since the opening day, has grown to astonishing proportions, has taken leaps and bounds beyond the imagination of what a school could be. As I tell my students that come to my class, this is not a high school. This is three different high schools that focus strictly on your goals and objectives, not on my goals. I am not the one that matters. It is the student and what their passion in life, and that's what we are concerned about. We have taken the basic high school from generations after generations and we have transformed it into a career academy that focuses on the students' dreams and their hopes and their ambitions. And we focus on that instead of, did you complete your math and your science? Instead, we ask, what is it that is going to affect you throughout your life? Instead, we ask, "What is it that is going to affect you throughout your life when you use that English and that math and that science? How can you incorporate that into your passion, into your dreams?" I ask my students, "Where did chemistry come from?" They say, "Oh, it was a science, it was created." But no, chemistry came from cooking. It was cooking, the art of sustaining life in which chemistry was invented. And it's that science that sustains our life. Now, we have Pro Start, we have other business classes, retail classes, and all of these students now see the difference between taking chemistry and living life. Tezen High School has transformed this island because we are the first accredited career academy west of Hawaii. And not only that, but the accreditation has asked us to be a model school for all others to emulate. I stand here proud to be an adopted son of Tezen High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tim. Mr. Peter Lexesada.
Uh, Senator, I'm gonna turn around and look at this way. Take a good look at me, my ugly face. When this topic came up several months ago about Tezen High School being closed, I got up and I said, "Where did this come from? This is news to me." I was the one who introduced to open this school after JFK and GW left to open up a high school here, which became eventually Tezen High School. So, I'm gonna cut my conversation short. When I walked in, the first thing came to my mind is, "Hey, is there a double session here? I don't know, I don't really ever recall approving that." So, you can walk and walk out of here freely and clearly. I will not repeat, not approve, to close Tezen High School. Rest assured that. I introduced it when I was a member, well, I'm still a member, but I introduced it to, and it was a long fight. We had to do redistricting. So, you heard the chairman say, he said, what did you say? No way, palao? Is that what you said? Over his dead body. He's not dead. Anyway, him, Ryan McGeech, right? And who? Judy Guttage and me. There's four votes. We're gonna work on one more to darn make sure that does not happen. Tezen High School, as Tim here introduced and said, has proven itself in a short time. I graduated from John F. Kennedy High School 57 years ago. Wow. Tezen did a hell of a lot better than we did. And I'm proud of you. So, I'm sorry that I have to, this is not normal for me talking this long. I have to leave, I have another meeting to attend. But do know, you can rest assure, count on it, I will not be voting to close Tezen High School. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ada. Next, we have Mr. Blake Florrie.
Hello, everyone. My name is Blake Florrie, and I'm a junior here at Tezen High School. First off, I want to thank the teachers and family members, and of course, every single Titan here, past and present, for showing up and supporting this cause. I know you guys said Tezen isn't on the table. But in the previous meeting, you also said Tezen isn't on the table. But then you contradicted it by saying Tezen shutting down is a suggestion. You can't say it's not on the table if it is a possible solution. If you want possible solution, here are some possible solutions. One, you can redistrict other high schools and middle schools who are very close in proximity to each other. Sorry. Many students are already accommodated to going to these other schools for the double session. So, if you redistrict those students when they graduate into high school or redistrict middle schools, it would be easier for them to go there because they already know how it is there. Because they drove down there every day for three years for the middle schools. One second. If, ooh, I'm not advocating for closing schools. But like you have said, it is one possible solution. I'm not trying to shift the burden onto another school, but AMS and BMS are so close in proximity that it would make more sense to close them or combine them. Why not place Sanchez students and redistrict them? Or honestly, redistrict every school on island, not just ours? Thank you.
Thank you, Blake. Next is Tia Jackson, Tara Jackson.
Hi, my name is Tia Jackson. Obviously, I've spoken at previous town hall meetings regarding Tezen High School and its status. I'm here again to speak on behalf of my school. After watching that video shared by Mr. Lucino, it's clear that Ms. Gutierrez held a private meeting discussing Tezen High School without a single Tezen representative member. That's not just unprofessional, it's improper. In that meeting, she called Tezen a temporary school again and mentioned closure and redistricting, even though Tezen is a permanent school, as you said, sir, proven by its ribbon-cutting, national accreditation, and recognition for its diverse pathways. At the last town hall meeting, the board stated that there was no plans to redistrict Tezen, yet the video completely contradicts that idea. How can we trust our board when the public statements and the private actions don't align? How can we trust leaders when some of the members use our closure as a threat rather than a solution? How can we trust the board when it consists of cowards that can't even bother to show up to these meetings? We've had to keep asking for reassurance, and every time we're told that Tezen is safe, we keep having to find out that someone's plotting on our downfall. That's not transparency, that's dishonesty. Now, we're told Ms. Gutierrez resigned because she felt pressure. But if a member can act improperly and resign when confronted and face no accountability whatsoever, then what does that say about the board's credibility? Especially when others can't even show up after being called out for their actions, Ms. Gutierrez. It might be redundant to restate this, but if Tezen continues to be left out of conversations about its future, then we'll keep reminding you, we deserve representation, transparency, and respect. And again, to those who believe Tezen should shut down, if you intend to hold private meetings discussing the fate of our school, then instead of skipping, then instead of skipping important town hall meetings, stick to your argument and stand on it.
Thank you, Tia. Next, we have Myra Hernandez-Bautista. M-I-R-A Hernandez-Bautista.
All the day, Senators, and also Hafidze to the Guam Board and Superintendent Swanson. Okay, so, we are actually here to represent both of our schools at JFK and also at Agatha Johnston Middle School. And this is actually an ongoing issue with all the schools islandwide. Now, students, how many, raise up your hand if you guys fundraised for all your goals this school year. All right, I hope everyone has a calculator on their phone. So, in 2021, there was a rule that was, how do I say this? There was a rule that was passed by Public Health and Social Services about a certain sanitary permit that every school needs to apply for. And it's not the one in regards to all schools being open, but it is about for schools to sell any type of food in their campuses. Now, that is under the Temporary Food Service Establishment, also known as the TFSE permit. Now, did you guys know that all schools have to apply the permit, and it's only allowed for six months? That costs $300, everyone? What's the number? Three, per site. So, let's say students want to sell here at the gym. Everyone say $300. But they want to also sell outside of the gym. Everyone say another $300. Titans, how much is that equal to? Now, that's for six months. Now, let's, but you know, a school year is longer than six months. So, if we make that a year, that is $1,200. Guess who pays for it? Not the school, not GDOE. That is paid by the student government associations of every single school on this island. $1,200 coming out of a student account. That is a lot of money. Titans, could you guys use that money for something else? Thank you. Now, so, as you guys, in our case, at Agatha Johnston Middle School, we were gracious enough that our parent-teacher organization wanted to pay for the site clearance, which they did. And then the SBA, money that was made by middle schoolers, middle schoolers who wanted to just sell snacks to their friends, they paid for the remaining six months. So, that's $600. But then, of course, the athletic department had to pay for the gym, the cafeteria, and the field. We spent almost $1,800 of the students' money, not the school, but the students' money for those clearances. Now, guess what happened at JFK a couple weeks ago? They had their homecoming. As an alumni of John F. Kennedy High School, I am proud to say that I really love coming to my old stomping grounds and seeing students have fun. Guess what? I had students come up to me and say, "Sir, we cannot even sell anything here because of the site clearance issue." Because in the site clearance, not only everyone has to have a health certificate, which is understandable, but we also have to pay a $400 serve safe manager certificate per location of the clearances. So, as you can see, the amount starts to rack up, and it starts to add up. And at the end of the day, who's paying for it? Is it the adults? No, it's the students. But in some cases, teachers, we feel bad, so we have to give our own money for these kids, which we don't mind, but we all unanimously agreed that this price, this price tag that has been given to us by Public Health should not be a burden on the students. Now, as, while we're trying to say these issues, of course, we're not gonna come here without providing solutions. So, Mrs. Hernandez is the PTO president of John F. Kennedy High School, but we also serve as advisors of the Student Body Association at Agatha Johnston Middle School.
So, Senators, so we come here to ask, to actually provide solution if the legislature could be amended and that we can waive the fees in order for our student to start selling at the school and doing fundraising. Our thing is that if we start waiving these fees, we will follow the guidelines that are put in place in order for us to get the site clearance at each location designated in the school. As we follow those, we also follow obtaining or obtaining a health certificate. But we also want for the department to kind of look into waiving or putting an option to having a serve safe. It's because a lot of the schools, the teachers or the advisors have to pay their own pocket in order to attain a serve safe. And majority of the time, a lot of the, a lot of the things that are being sold in school are just prepackaged food, like snacks, drinks. And most of the time, it's not food that we prepare like restaurants. So, we just see that it could be waived and be discussed in order for us to be able to support the students and their efforts to raise funds for their activities and anything that they wanna do for their school.
So, respectfully speaking, at the end of the day, all that we want is make the students' money go to where they want, not because we're regulated by a government entity to ensure, to only control us to sell what we want for our goals. It's really redundant. I, students, do you guys want your money to go into other aspects besides your goals? Yes or no? The students have spoken. I've asked my middle school students, 12 to 15 years old, they all said the same thing. Why are we giving our money to other people? We wanted to use it for ourselves. If middle schoolers could make that decision and high schoolers make that decision, then I believe the legislature could also help us in carrying the student's vision. That's all that we have for today. We thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to respond?
Hi, guys. Shawn Monforti, Food and Nutrition for DOE. Okay, so, it all depends on which sanitary permit you guys are applying for that you will need a serve safe for. If you're cooking and you're managing a restaurant, you need a serve safe. If you're applying for your temporary sanitary permit, you, as far as we know, you just need your health certificates. Now, food sales in your school, no matter what they are, you have a Board Policy 705 that dictates what you can and cannot do, which mimics the CFR, which is our federal regulations. So, when we say you can't serve spun candy, candy, sodas during the school day, that is because we opted for a national school lunch program, which is the reason why people eat without having, at no cost. So, we have to juggle what we can do and what we want to do. So, if you want to serve anything a half an hour after the last school bell, that is beyond the board policies and the CFRs. Anything within that timeframe, we have to follow the CFRs. So, the sanitary permits, the temporary sanitary permits, which are the ones for about $180, $130, that one, you do not need a serve safe. But if you're selling or preparing food or cooking food, you need a serve safe. And if that's the case, DOE has the capability to do serve safe out of the Tezen office, and you only have to pay for the test. Everything else, we handle. We handle the materials, we handle the testing, the teaching, but we do, and then we do the serve safe out of our central office. Okay? Thank you. And we will, we could get with me offline, and we could get it. It's under $40 a person, though. And your option is still possible through legislation, though. That, we have to work with our Senators on that, because it is a regulatory agency. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Ms. Sophia Yen.
Hi, may. Hello, Steve. My name is Sophia, and I want to apologize first if I come off as rude or something. But I just got here too, so excuse that. Um, good evening. My name is Sophia Yen, and I'm here to express my deep concerns about the proposal to close Tezen High School. First off, our teachers and students have worked tirelessly to build a safe, supportive environment where students truly can thrive. It's also the only accredited high school on the island. Doesn't that say something? If Tezen were to close, the impact would reach far beyond its walls. Students would be displaced into already overcrowded schools, stretching resources and breaking the strong relationships between students and teachers, relationships that make learning possible. Personally, for me, without the support of my teachers and the staff of Tezen, I wouldn't be here standing proud and tall. Tezen also serves a diverse, a diverse community with unique programs, serving from CTE courses to unique student councils and clubs, giving students opportunities and new profound friendships and learning experience for their life. They can, they can't find that anywhere else. Closing the school would take away not just these programs, but a sense of belonging and identity that so many of us can call our second home. Instead of closing Tizen, let's focus on rebuilding Simon Sanchez, finding ways to solve, to fix a problem instead of redirecting the issue for the public to focus on something else while you mess around in the background and to start toying with everyone else on empty promise that Tizen isn't closing. You said that last time, and we're still here talking about the issue. You'll probably say it again, and we'll still talk about Tizen not cl- closing down. I urge the board to not close any school. We, when closing a school, you don't save money. You sacrifice opportunities for students to learn. I urge the board to reconsider this pro- this proposal. Let's preserve and enhance what Tizen has built. Let's continue to invest in our students, our teachers, and our community because they are worth it. And this just isn't for Tizen, it's for all the schools. If you want to show the public that you have our back, then we will do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Um, Senator Barnes is gonna have to leave. I'm gonna have to say a few words before she leaves, and then we'll have Ms. Erica Cruz. If there's anybody else, it seems, she was the last one signed up or indicated she was gonna speak. So if there's any additional students or teachers or staff that would like to speak, uh, please let one of the staff members know or, um, just come up to the mic when you're ready.
Ms. Joyce Mossy, Mr. Chair, Hafedan, good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be invited here as we sit and continue to listen to the concerns of our students. I want to say that each and every one of you are really important to the policy that we need to continue to either revise, amend, repeal, or to add. And in this case, there's an overwhelming majority from all the panel members and the, and the folks that have spoken that they will not close Tizen down. And that commitment still stands with, with folks like me up here as your vice chair for education and working closely with the chairman. Senator Bora, I think it's really important that we continue to listen to the, the pleas of the school, the only accredited school, the opportunity for twelve different career pathways. Why would we want to break something that has been a great success for the island of Guam? So Titans, Beba to each and every one of you. I apologize, I have to leave early. I have to present a resolution to, to another organization that's been here for fifty years. But I think that you guys are important enough for me to continue to saying, continue to do what you do great, continue to succeed, and just know that Beba Titans, you guys are number one. Thank you.
Ms. Erica Cruz.
Oh, this is so high. Hi, um, I'm gonna take this down. Uh, good afternoon. My name is Erica Cruz. I am the, um, acting principal for JP Torres Success Academy. However, back in two thousand twelve, I was a deputy superintendent of educational support and community learning. Under the, um, leadership of John Fernandez, Superintendent John Fernandez, te- to open Tizen High School was my first project. It took over a year. And I know, uh, Ms. Sophie Duennias can attest to that. We, um, you know, when we started this project, uh, what we first solicited was who wanted to transfer to Tizen High School? And we were kind of, uh, afraid that no one wouldn't want to come to Tizen High School. But we had an overwhelming number of teachers who wanted to come to Tizen High School to start this wonderful school, that we had to turn teachers down from other schools to, to open this school. We were part of the committee, and all the high school administrators, along with board members, attended community meetings from Mighty, Assin, all the way up to Daddy Do because we knew we need to, needed to redistrict. So this is new to me that this was a temporary school because it was never, I was never informed that this school would be temporary. We spent, Sophie Duennias and I spent months picking out everything that you see on this campus, from the desk, the chairs, the wrestling mats. She can attest to it. Student desks, teacher desks, uh, everything in the offices. We sat for hours every Saturday with Core Tech, choosing out how this school is going to be. So i- it's difficult for me to stand here or sit here and listen to say that this was a temporary school, that it was meant for a temporary school. Because as the deputy superintendent of educational support and community learning, I was never told that it would be a temporary school. So I support keeping Tizen High School. I'm a product of GCC Vocational High School. It is sad that Vocational High School closed. You have a nationally accredited school with a CTE, the only school on the island with a CTE accreditation. And it's sad that we're going to throw everything away, throw the baby with the bathwater when you have dedicated teachers who want to be in this school now. They chose to be in this school. They did not, they were not forced to be in this school. They chose Tizen High School. So I support the continuation of Tizen High School. I know what I risk here, standing before you. But I support Tizen High School. We did a lot of work to ensure that we addressed the overcrowding at George Washington High School, John F. Kennedy High School, uh, Simon Sanchez, and Okudoh High School. So there was community input. Uh, board members were present. I was present. Deputy Superintendent Joe Sanchez was present during those meetings. And there was no indication that Tizen High School would be temporary. So it is a surprise to me to hear that uh, at the last board meeting and this, this, uh, forum today. And so I support because I have a very vested interest in Tizen High School. I helped open this school, down to the teachers and every equipment that is on this campus. So I support continuing Tizen High School, home of the Titans.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Any other teachers, staff, parents, students? The sign-in sheet, we've exhausted the sign-in sheet, so now it's open for, um, anybody in the community that would like to speak.
Hafed, oh, thank you. Hi, uh, Hafed, senators, um, superintendents, board chairmen, deputies, and my fellow Titans. So my name is Mariana Hernandez. I am a teacher here at Tizen High School. Um, I'm actually an OG. Uh, I'm one of those teachers that, uh, Principal Cruz talked about who chose to come here. Um, we were given, we were told that this school was going to open, not temporarily, as a permanent new high school. And I and several of my colleagues at GW chose to venture forth to open up a new school and join Ms. Duennias in this journey. So, um, I'm actually here to talk about another issue that we're having, since we've had so many assurances that Tizen High School is not going to close. Um, uh, Chairman, you did mention four, but I know we need five. So I'm hoping we have a fifth one out of the nine that will agree because four is not a majority. So I'm really hoping, uh, any board members who may watch this in the future, hopefully, or who may, uh, talk about this in the future, that they also choose to keep our wonderful school open. But there is another issue that our school is going through, and that is our leasehold owner. Um, so one of the issues that we have at Tizen High School is maintenance. Um, because we are a lease held school, uh, we, our maintenance is done by Core Tech. And one of our main issues is that we have to fight constantly in order to get things fixed. And we are also constantly told that it is not something that is under contract that can be fixed because our kids are the ones that broke them. We've been told that a underground pipe that the broke, it's broken because our kids broke it. So I don't know how they did it. Were they digging underneath to get to it? I don't think so. So I would like our Department for GDOE to hold, uh, Core Tech accountable. They, this school costs over two hundred million dollars from the government. Over two hundred million dollars, guys. This is how much our school was paid for by the government of Guam to open. I don't know if you remember any of that, that contract that was done back in the Calvo administration, I believe. Uh, so I would like our, I would like Core Tech to be held responsible to that. Our school is constantly put together by the wonderful and tireless work of our staff. Every time we have to, every time we have to prepare for our, um, inspections, we don't get anyone to help. No, we don't have volunteers from the military. We don't have volunteers from the, it is our school. It is our staff. It is our students. It is our aides. They are the one who fix things. And, um, all of the things that you see, the stage behind you, that was done by one of our aides. You know, the, so all of the things that really get fixed are done by our school, and it should not be. So please, if you are gonna keep us open, you gotta also help us maintain our facilities, and that has to be done by holding Core Tech accountable.
Thank you. Any otherbody, any other students, teachers, parents wishing to speak?
Hello? Good evening. My name is Kioni Bloss. Uh, good evening, uh, senators, board members. Uh, I just wanted to bring up the subject about the FAFSA being a requirement to graduate. This is the first year that it's going to be implied. I don't agree with it personally, ha- putting another requirement on these children that are gonna be graduating. They've already had to make the qualifying credits or the service learning hours. And now this FAFSA, um, giving out personal information or taxes, information like that, that's, you know, pretty personal. And what I've seen, this, this child is eighteen years old, doesn't have any tax, uh, filings or maybe even, not even a bank account. How would that, uh, work for that child not to graduate? There's already programs that have been established long ago for, uh, grants to go to college, loans. All of those have been already in place for a long time. But now, to me, I feel like my child is gonna be held hostage from graduating just because of this FAFSA deal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. What I, what I can say is obviously, I think this bill was passed in the previous legislature. But now that it's being implemented, we're obviously starting to hear some of the, the issues and hurdles that the schools that, that are coming with. And we understand in regards to, to being, you know, your stu- your child probably asking to bring their tax forms or their personal financial information. And so we'll definitely, uh, review that as the committee, and we'll work with our colleagues in the legislature to see if there are anything else that we can do to change that or possibly repeal it. But, um, no co- no commitment. You know, it's gonna take seven other senators to repeal it. But, uh, but we'll definitely look into that because we do recognize it's a hurdle, um, and comes with a lot of. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Barbara Adames. I'm, uh, the acting deputy superintendent of educational support and community learning. We have met with the school counselors and the, the high school administrators to basically go over the steps on how we are going to assist our seniors and parents in filling out the FAFSA, uh, documentation online. Nobody is going to take the document from the parent and enter the information on the computer. The parent does it or the student does it. And we also have our partnership with GCC and the University of Guam's Financial Aid Office, where they're going to set up sites in the community or on their campus or at, like, for example, the Micronesian Mall, to go over what FAFSA is, what does it do to benefit you? If you decide to, uh, go to college or if you're not too sure, at least you see what financial options are available for you. And who knows, maybe two or three years after graduation, you might say, hey, I remember completing FAFSA and my score was this amount, and it did qualify me for, uh, financial assistance. And it's pretty much that awareness because in two thousand twenty-three, I believe we, we did not tap into over three million dollars worth of financial aid. And it was because our students didn't know. And so this is one way of bringing about awareness, and we are going to help you. It's not, go do it now and get it done and turn it in in April, and hopefully you meet the third graduation requirement. Counselors and, uh, school administrators have poster displays. They have active, uh, parent meetings. And it's up to you when you want to go online and fill out the, uh, requirements. Uh, but just so you know, and we're not really hitting heavy on this part, but eventually, there will be an opportunity for you to sign a waiver, which basically means we have tried to help you. You maybe don't see the need for it at this point. And so you will sign a waiver or the eighteen-year-old or seventeen-year-old senior will sign the waiver. And then the principal, excuse me, the principal will confirm, and then you would have met the third graduation requirement. So it's a process. We're, we're not looking at having parents say, by the end of this month, oh, we don't want to do it. We want to sit down and say, here's why you should. Let's check it next month if it doesn't sound like it's something you want to do this time around. But the goal is to help you to get it done and then see what you're eligible for, uh, financial aid when you do decide to go to college. So I hope this helps, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Adames. Any last, last call for comments?
Thank you very much for allowing me to come up and speak again on a different subject. My name is Timothy McDowell. I am the career and technical education instructor here at Tizen High School. I have a son that has completed college. I have a daughter that just graduated high school and is going to college. However, when I heard about this law that was secretly passed in the legislature just prior to them being ousted by the voters, I was very, very upset. And the reason why I'm upset is because I'm not only a career and technical education teacher, but I'm also an economist. That's my profession. I'm also a social studies teacher. And as part of social studies, we emphasize that the government in the United States is not permitted to force its citizens to be subject to any type of indentured servitude. And this law is forcing the parents of our students to apply for a student loan. That's what the FAFSA is. Yes, if you qualify under the criteria of the Department of Education, the U.S. Department of Education, you can receive free money to go to college. But on the flip side of that, they take that application when you don't qualify, and they use it as a loan application so that students can apply for ten, fifteen, and even twenty thousand dollars in student loans. The content here of this law is that every student cannot graduate from high school unless they complete the FAFSA application. Not submit, but complete, which means that they've completed all the criteria, they've submitted it to the U.S. Well, at this point, we don't know who's going to be administering student loans. It used to be the Department of Education. But they have to complete the application. They have to reveal all their finances. They have to reveal every house that they own. They have to reveal every car that they own. They have to reveal every dollar of income and much, much more. And then on top of that, we have tons of intelligent students here at Tizen High School that qualify for literally tens of thousands of dollars in student, uh, scholarships. And every dollar that they are awarded on their own is reduced from their FAFSA application because it's based on need. if you need less, they give you less. The content here, what I am getting to the bottom line, the government of Guam cannot force the people of Guam to submit a loan application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll have Senator Barnett, we'll give him a couple minutes, and then we'll have Ms. Duñez close. Thank you.
Si do swasi, Mr. Chair, and buenas noches, Titans. Thanks for having us here at the throne, and I think it's appropriate, they call it the throne, because you are the kings and the queens of the future, so si do swasi for having us. Test, test, test. Yeah, now, let's give it up one more time for the chair, Mr. Angel Sablon, you heard the commitment here? Over his dead body, and you know, I'll just add mine to that, too, because it has been this meeting that occurred in the last year, you know, from what I understand, that was an open discussion, and Mr. Fedenko and Ms. Chairman, Chairwoman Geteras were discussing all of the options. But I think after that meeting, I mean, even I got calls about this, and when I was approached by people from the Tezen High Community, I always said the same thing, hell no, we're not gonna close Tezen High School. And so it's very encouraging how engaged you all are with local politics and the current events. Want to also give a big round of applause to your teachers, because I know that they're keeping you guys engaged. And that's very important, you know, if you don't make noise, if you don't talk loud so that we can hear up here, then we're gonna end up with the same situations that we have with Simon Sanchez, where it's just the same thing over and over, and pretty soon you're looking at, we've been talking about building a new school for 20 years already, so please keep being engaged, and please keep holding us accountable. Also want to thank Blake, Kayla, Tia, Sophia, also Colonel Flores for their, their input tonight, si do swasi. You know, it's always good to hear the youth speak, even if you don't agree, or you don't like what they're saying, it's very important to hear our kids. On the subject of the permits, I know that there's a lot of interest up here on this table, from the chair to the vice chair, to myself, to support legislation that doesn't do away with the requirements that were, you know, putting on you to be clean and to be sanitary when you're selling the food, but does do away with the cost to the students. The, the students should not be having to raise $1,800 just to pay for permits, and then when you have to raise $1,800, that, that leaves like $2 for your activities, so that's absolutely not fair, you know, that's not like you're not even fundraising for your activities, you're fundraising to pay for these damn permits. So no more permits, we're gonna introduce a bill, or figure out how that we can, we can help you guys with that at the legislature, because that's absolutely very, very important. And just lastly, I want to commend Principal Duñez, AP Ponzalan, and the, the staff and faculty here. You know, when this discussion happened in that meeting about Tezen being closed, why it seemed so ridiculous to me was because, as was said earlier, Tezen should absolutely be the model for so many of our high schools across the island, because, you know, the goal in a high school isn't just to go four years and get your, you know, your piece of paper and walk out into the world. It's our responsibility as elected leaders and the government to make sure that when you leave high school, you're ready for the real world. And here at Tezen High School, Principal Duñez, AP Ponzalan, all the staff and the faculty, through all the career keys and the work keys and all the programs, they are absolutely making sure that you're ready for the real world after you do four years there at Tezen High School. So I just wanted to say that, you know, closing Tezen, hell no, ah, heat to the max. Biba Titans! Biba Titans! And again, thank you, guys, on the issue of the lease maintenance, that's actually why I attended tonight, because I've been hearing a lot of concerns about the unwillingness of the landlord to address a lot of the maintenance issues here, and I thank Mrs. Hernandez for bringing up those issues, because my office has also been in receipt of that. It's a similar issue we're seeing with the other landlord over at the, the group that's, they're trying to refinance there, I think that's Stumbo and some of those other schools, so this is very common, and this, it's gonna take really DOE, holding the landlord accountable with the support of the legislature, because this contract, we don't know what's in it, we don't know what it says, but absolutely the landlord should be responsible for maintaining the property here at Tezen. And I also just want to thank everybody who has done their hard part with the maintenance, with the bush cutting and all the things that has to get done here at Tezen High. And again, thank you for having us, it was very good, we don't have, we didn't have a blessed table at the other town hall, I don't think, so thank you for your hospitality again, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak tonight. Biba Tezen High School!
Thank you, Senator Barnett. And now we'll have your principal, Ms. Duñez, give her closing remarks.
Thanks, guys. So we have to be here in less than 12 hours again, right? Yes, early, come early to school, tonight's not an excuse to come late. Okay, I'm not an ad lib person, I need to read my speeches, so I'm gonna read you my speech. As we close this town hall meeting, I want to express our deepest gratitude to Senator Borja, Senator Barnett, Senator Munia Barnes, for making the time to hear us. Also, the board representatives for their clear commitment that Tezen High School will remain open, that reass, that reassurance means everything to us. To our faculty members who testified tonight and at the September board meeting, thank you for your advocacy, your professionalism, and your unwavering dedication to our students. Your voices matter, and they were heard. And to our students, the most important people in this gym tonight. You showed tremendous courage speaking your truth today, you reminded all of us why we fight for this school, because it's not just build a building, it's your home, it's your community, and it's your future. Tonight wasn't just about airing concerns, and every time I say we air concerns, we do it positively, right? So each testimony, each story, each worry shared here will inform the conversations and decisions ahead. We leave here tonight not just relieved, but reinvigorated. Let's continue working together, students, faculty, families, and community, to make Tezen High School the exceptional place we all know it can be, that it already is, right? Thank you for being here, and thank you for caring, and thank you for being Tezen High School.
Thank you, Ms. Duñez. Again, thank you for everybody who participated tonight, students, thank you, parents, staff. And the other thing that we wanted to address, because I know there have been some questions in regards to other board members, Dr. Ocata and Mrs. Geteras are off island, and that is why they're not at this board, or at this town hall. So for those that are wondering where they're at, or why they didn't show up, they were off island when we, and they already had plans when we scheduled this town hall. But again, thank you, everybody who participated in this town hall. Your voices are essential in shaping the future of education in our community, and tonight's dialogue is a vital step toward meaningful progress. Let's continue to stand together with determination and purpose as we strive for a brighter future for our children. Thank you once again for your commitment and participation. If you have additional comments, questions, or concerns, feel free to reach out to my office at office.senatorborja@guamlegislature.gov, or you can call 671-969-8423. Thank you, have a great evening, the time is now 6:37 PM, and we are now adjourned. Thank you. Biba Titans!